This week's episode is sponsored by the Council on Aging.
Hello, everybody. This is the Chocolate News Podcast and I'm your host Andrea Carter. My co-host John Reese is on vacation this week. And I am, and if you don't know, the Cincinnati Herald has been around since nineteen fifty-five and is the leading African-American owned newspaper in greater Cincinnati area in northern Kentucky. And today we have special guest council members Scotty Johnson and Councilwoman Victoria Parks. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening Andrea. Thank you so much for having us.
Oh, it's my pleasure to have you both there. I'm very excited about having you on today. But first, what we're going to do is we're going to dive into a little bit of chocolate news. And first up for chocolate news, we are going to be very excited. I'm very excited about this. The Bengals beat the Falcons. Yes. Poo day. I am so happy. And it, what is exciting is Joe Burrows has been named Player of the Week for the second week in a row. The Bengals quarterback had four hundred eighty-one yards and three touchdowns on thirty-four of the forty-two attempts in the Cincinnati's thirty-five to seventeen win over the Atlanta Falcons. Both Jamar Chase and Tyler Boyd finished with more than one hundred yards in just the first half. And T. Higgins was seven yards under the hundred mark. I think it's fantastic that Burrows is Player of the Week again. The Bengals are showing the promise that they showed last year. I think they finally got all the tweaks done and we're gonna have a promising season. We'll just have to, hopefully they're over the curse of Monday Night Football when they play Cleveland Browns. So we'll have to see what happens on Monday night. Next up, we had a very sad shooting in St. Louis where two victims died. And another person was arrested in a school, which is unfortunate. The Central Visual and Performing Arts High School, eight people were hospitalized with various injuries. Few more suffered from gunshot wounds, but it was unclear at the time when the reporting occurred, two people have died, but the suspect died after he opened fired. Inside the high school, but the police responded very quickly and handled the situation. So it's another sad shooting, but luckily not that many people were affected. And I just pray that we get a handle on all these shootings over time. Next up, what can we say about Kanye West? Um, I, I, I hope he meets someone who can take him in hand and help the boy, because right now he just bent on destroying himself. Um, with his antisemitic remarks and everything that he's doing. And Adidas is another business partnership that has ended with him. So I, I don't know what's happening with him. I hope things worked out for him real quick. It's just sort of a sad way to go to see this promising young man. Who is an excellent rapper is just choosing to go down a very negative path. And last but not least, which I think is me very interesting is. Rishi Sunak is the new Prime Minister of, of England and he is the first, he is the youngest Prime Minister. That England has had in over two hundred years. He's only forty-two years old. And he's facing a huge, huge economic problems and other things. He's had to re restart his cabinet. People had to prove to him. Why they should keep their jobs as he retools what's been going on. He said in his speech that even though. Some things were made, there are a lot of mistakes made. He said, I'm here to fix them, correct them and move forward. So we're going to see what happens with this young man as he moves forward. And that's the chocolate news for today. Because I'm very excited to get started with the conversation with Councilmember Scotty Johnson and Victoria Parks. Hello and welcome again to the Chocolate News Podcast.
Good evening Andrea.
Um, one thing, were you all at the concert last night for Common?
I was not there.
Okay. I meant that also.
Yeah, well, I mean, it was interesting because the mayor awarded Common, the rapper of the key to the city last night. And Common talked about his connection to Cincinnati, how he and his cousins hung, hung out on the corners in Bond Hill. Um, but the reason why I brought that up is that the mayor really spoke about the, the diversity of Cincinnati. His greatness, his strength of character, how wonderful it is that Cincinnati is so diverse. And that being said, what is happening? With people of color getting contracts with the city of Cincinnati is that I know they have been working on it for a while. Has it improved? There's still a lot of work to be done. What can you tell me?
If I can jump first, uh, the, um, like I said, thank you Andrea for having us. Um, I think that the city of Cincinnati. Has amazing potential to be as diverse as we appear to be. And that is not marginalizing the work that has been done and it's not marginalizing what we're striving to do here. In the city of Cincinnati and having the pleasure to serve citizens on council. That's not marginalizing the steps that we've taken. But I think the, I think that optically, it does seem to be very diverse. But I still think we have an amazing amount of work to do to get to where the optics fit exactly what is going on. So let me just break this down very quickly. I, I would love to see more black restaurants, more black businesses in the city of Cincinnati. Uh, myself and Victoria this week, along with the Vice Mayor, worked diligently trying to get a loan for a. Not a loan, but I should say like this, we tried to get funding for the West End Sports Bar and Grill. And the West End Sports Bar and Grill would have been the only sit-down restaurant in the West End. So optically, it does, it looks, and I am happy with the progress that we are making. But we've got so much further to go and I want the, I want the actuality to match the optics in reality.
Um, Scotty, I, I couldn't agree more. I, I was really disappointed in what happened, but it's not over. Because the sports bar has an opportunity to write a grant. Our city has such potential for greatness and with this. Council is striving to do is to, is to do what other councils haven't done is to, um, live up to our promise. And to, to overcome the obstacles and barriers that have been in place for people of color. And it's, uh, you know, it, it is embedded with this council and this mayor and myself, Scotty and Jan Michelle, we just will not give up. And, and, and I also speak for the other council people. Now, I, I'm going to share this with you. Scotty and I, uh, we were talking and. What, what we think, matter of fact, what, what is a fact is, you know, I'm, I'm home bred. I'm, I'm homegrown. I'm from here. I remember the riots and, and, and many other things that have taken place. And so it is my objective. To work with the mayor and with the citizens of this potentially great city to become the best that we can be.
I, I think that's fair. I know that the, the city has, um, taken great strides to try to improve. Making sure there's a diverse collection of people getting contracts with the city. And then I know there are some agencies that have done a lot of work over the years with the city. Um, they're known to the city, their, their work is known and they automatically get considered for contracts where other people don't. What can we do? I know there was a study done way back when on, you know, the economic diversity of the city contracts and. Um, I know everyone's been working hard on that. What is the next link, linking up with the, the various chambers? Uh, making sure both black and brown business people have the opportunity to be awarded a city contract or, um. Lobby the city or, I mean, I'm trying to think of how, what's the best way to handle this because I know everyone is working for diversity. But what has been the best way to handle that at the end of the day, when there's contracts, when their proposals competing with each other? What's the best bet to make sure that we have this diverse pool of applicants?
I think one of the first steps, I think the African-American Chamber is just trying to provide a lot of different opportunities. For black and brown businesses to, uh, link up with the city. Having said that though, I think the, the city, we've got to do a better job of providing opportunity for black and brown businesses. And some of that is eliminating the red tape that unfortunately was, is, uh, the red tape that we've inherited as a council. Try to cut down on some of that and make sure that it's not a, a act of Congress. And I'm saying that metaphorically, it doesn't take an act of Congress. To sign a contract with the city of Cincinnati. Uh, I do believe legislation and or we have charged the administration. Probably in the next sixty days now, and correct me if I'm wrong, V, to come up with a strategy where there's not so many, so much red tape and loopholes. I think, I think the city of Cincinnati, we've got to be part of that solution and cutting down on the red tape. And making sure there's not so many loopholes that businesses have to go through.
I couldn't agree more, uh, Scotty. What I'm excited about Andrea is the Convention Center District. And the work that is taking place behind the scenes right now. I believe you remember when we first got there and, and Three C D C. Was awarded the development contract.
Yes.
I insisted that within that contract, there had to be equity language. And so that spurred. A lot of activity that we are still working on. Jan Michelle, who is not here, brought to our attention what they're doing in Philadelphia. At what's called the Naval, what's it called Naval Yard.
Mm-hmm. Oh, yes.
Yeah.
So, so that will be our blueprint. That is awesome. And we have been in talks and meetings. Matter of fact, I'm gonna. Uh, we will all be at a meeting tomorrow. This is so cool. Franklin County, which is Columbus, Ohio. They have a program called Building Futures and it works. My hope. This is what I'm excited about.
Well, I, I know that everyone, you know, the blueprints, the plans and things like that, but also is anyone taking a look at? Making sure that the staff buys into the vision the city council is putting out. Because you know, sometimes as you go down the, the rung, as this gets implemented, this gets implemented. It gets stalled or it gets stopped or get changed because those who handle the day-to-day operations of this decides we can just change this or add this. And they don't buy in or they want to make sure the friends or the people they know that can get the job done and send it over to somebody else stymies that. So how are we going to deal with buying?
This is what's going to be different. We want to change the entire narrative. Um, what we want to happen is we want to change lives. We want to build careers. We want to train people. To be able to buy homes, send their kids to college and retire with dignity. And in the meantime, we will have these projects completed. And so instead of the projects being the main thing. In Cincinnati, what will be important to us is changing, uh, the way that people make their living. You know, instead of people having their nose pressed against the candy store all of the time. Because in my heart, I know that that is why there is crime because people are hungry. You know, you know, people that can take care of their families and, and, uh, pay their bills and have a home, they're, they're not out. Committing crimes, you know, killing each other. With, with this project, working with the unions, working with, um. The different companies. Um, and, and, and I will say that I have a. Probably somewhat of a different point of view because I come from the county. You know, and the, and the way that we did things over there in order to, what, what I want the city to be able to do is. To be able to measure the contractors that we sign up against the projects that we have.
Yeah, because I mean, you, I see, you know, a number of companies that are awarded projects to fill the potholes. To fix bridges or you know, whatever, have you whatever the RFP is. Um, but you don't see. A lot of companies with, of people of color getting those contracts.
That, that is what we're working on. I'm sorry.
You know, go ahead. That's great, B. Great information. But Andrew, you're right. Uh, another thing we're doing differently is that all new projects. Have to, before they even start, Director Carter is doing amazing work in making sure we have those specs. And what those, uh, what that work crew is going to look like before they even get started. And that's the work of Victoria and, and Jan Michelle. They have, they're making sure that every time, and we inherited all of this. But they are making sure that the city stays on course for what we all want to see. Increase black homeownership, increase black, black and brown businesses. They're making sure Jan and, and Victoria are making sure. That it is in writing that what those numbers look like for those doing the work. So you're right Andrea. Sometime things get lost in the shuffle, but we've got an amazing young lady in, uh, Director Carter. I can't, um, it escapes me.
Oh, Marquita, Marquita Carter.
Yes, yes.
She, she is amazing. I remember when, um, she, um, I forgot what job she held before she became director. Um, with the city, but I was always amazed at what she was able to accomplish when I was there working for Yvette Simpson. And you know, the knowledge of seeing how things operate on the other side of the line, so to speak, and. See what was going on behind the cities and how things operate and how things go. And you, you know, and sometimes some people say it's a game. To try and win a contract from the city or to navigate the politics of the city and things like that. And. And I always just tell people, well, you know, it, it may be a game, but just get the popcorn and watch and see what happens and, you know. You know, I'm always telling, saying, let's get some popcorn machine in, in City Hall so that, you know, we can sit down and enjoy what, you know, what the meetings are about. But that's just me. I'm a glutton for punishment.
Say this, Andrew, real fast. I, I think, uh, here, here's, here's what I think I can not think. Here's what I will say, and I think V, Victoria will, will back me a hundred percent on this. It's a new day at City Hall.
Yes, sir.
Get here overnight, but I, I, this, here's my commitment and I've said this on the floor council and, and I mean this. First of all, I'm not going to waste words, uh, and where I am in my life. That's, that's number one. Number two is I am not going to idly sit by and just watch business as usual. And what has transpired over the years at City Hall where people would just give you the brunt, the bums rush. Based on their expertise and then we just swallow wholeheartedly what they deliver. We, Director Carter and this council, and I can say all of my colleagues.
City manager.
Yeah, city manager, this, yeah, the administration, the mayor. We are, we want to see it. And this council, I can say, will not run away from the difficult, difficult conversations. And the difficult things that have been done in the past. I know I've got colleagues that will back me to the hilt by myself, Jan and Victoria did it this. This week, we lost on some things. I don't like to say lose, but yeah, we didn't get everything we wanted to see. But I'll be dead on if we're not going to try to make sure City Hall does business differently with this elected body.
Well, I, I, I do have to say that with this council, you, you all, all of you are paying more attention to the data. You all are paying attention to the details, which has not been seen before as much with a council.
Andrea, we, we came to play.
Well, I, 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 you, you know, I've been, you know, I pop up everywhere and I've seen you all all over the place. I'm, I'm just like the Energizer Bunny too, myself. Um, with the many hats that I wear, but, um, I, I think on another subject close to this is that, um, what about the gun violence? That's been going on in the city. You know, we, we have, um, Scotty, we're just at the Gun Violence Prevention Summit on Saturday. Um, I thought that was a pretty good start, but where can the city go to handle, um, the sort of. Get the guns off the street, out of the hands of our young people, but also what can we do? To get the young people to not pick up a gun to handle their business, but do something different?
Well, you know what, Andrew? Uh, here, here's where this comes into play. It's all hands on deck. And what I mean specifically like by that is this, the police can't do it, City Hall can't do it, churches can't do it. The, the rec centers can't do it. None of us can do it exclusively in ourselves. But I do believe we all can do it, everybody playing their role and staying in their lane. I said it Saturday and I'll say it again. Sometime we as legislators need to get out of the way. And assist those that are on the ground, the Mitch Morrises, the, uh, inner states. And I'm going to get in trouble because I'm gonna leave some people out. We need to get out of the way and let those people do what they do. So if everybody plays their role, I believe we can see a reduction in gun violence in Cincinnati. But the key is everybody playing their role and staying in their lane. And, but as legislators sometime, because we control purse strings, we want to get out of our lane and start doing things that we have no business trying to do. Andrea is going to take us trusting those foot soldiers, those boots-on-the-ground people, the Pete Bengals. The people that have been doing it year after year, the Ozzy Davises, they've been doing it year. Get out of the way. Do what we can to provide the resources for them to do their thing. It's not popular to tell legislators, get out of the way. But I'm willing to be one of those people as a legislator to get out of the way right now. Stay in my lane. And assist where we can so the foot soldiers can get the work done.
Well, I know one thing that.
That, that's why it was disappointing with the way that the money went the other day.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's right.
I can understand. I mean, think about this, the Community Police Partnering Center has been around for eighteen years. Working on this issue created out of collaborative and they've just been quietly doing their job. The, the community outreach advocates are. The ones responding to the, um, critical incidents and, um, you know, they're quiet foot soldiers in this fight. To mentor the young people, get them to choose a different way and go from there. And you know, in my role as communication specialist. Um, working with the residents to find solutions, problem solving their safety issues. How can we better do our jobs? In terms of safety, because we can't police our way out of it. Every, all the, right now, I mean, I was at a meeting yesterday, our police department is looking for recruits. Um, they're struggling, everyone is struggling across the country to get people interested and being, becoming police officers. Um, it is a noble profession, even though it's gotten a bad rap here and there. Our police department has grown substantially over the last twenty years that. They have come a long way and they're really a good institution of police work. How can we encourage people to join them?
I'm gonna give my colleague, because, because he, he was one of the soldiers on the ground. Uh, you know, doing his job with dignity and, and standing up for the community. Um, and, and, and what, this is where I want to talk about what we're going to meet about tomorrow. In terms of the Convention Center District, we are going to take the heat maps. And, and work within the neighborhoods where there is the most crime to try to recruit. Young people to come and, and be union members. To, we, we will give them, for the first time, we actually have the money. So that's what's exciting. We have enough money to deal with individuals and to eliminate the obstacles. To get them to the next place where they can actually. Become productive members of society. And, 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 and we're talking about more than one thing. Um, so more than the Convention Center and ninety other projects. Right now, we have all these projects. We don't have enough people. To hire to fulfill these, but we have, we have enough in the population. The other thing is that we have the, um. Scotty, what's it called for the, uh, um, uh, the, for, for the firemen and for the policemen?
Oh, the academy, yeah. The, the safety academy, yeah.
Right, right. The, the Safety Academy. We want to provide a pipeline from high school to a career. Instead of the pipeline from school to prison. And, and, and we are going to use the data that we have. And, and so what I'm talking about right now. Is to use the heat maps and go to recruit these people, these young people, because they're hungry. Who doesn't want to live a, a productive life? And, and I suggest that the crime and the shootings and the killings is a, is a direct result of the lack of opportunity.
You know what, V, you are absolutely correct. They are, that's their, that is definitely a major contributing factor, but just let me, if I can say this very quick, Andrea. Listen to the, what, what, what Victoria was just talking about. Pipe fitting, bricklaying, electricians. Those are three professions that if these young people are given the opportunity. And resources are provided for them to get into these unions and we've got the cooperation of these unions. Get into there and the, you're talking about life-changing professions. There are, there are bricklayers and electricians that are making six figures easy, easy. So the, so we're talking about life-changing strategies that will change the dynamics. In people's, in people's lives. We're talking about life-changing opportunities. That changes the dimensions for generations. And this is the type of amazing strategies. That I gotta say, this council is willing to explore and dive into. And do everything necessary to make sure those in need get exactly what's necessary. So they do change, so generations are changed.
I know that there's some around the country, some community colleges were, um, taking up that mantle and making sure that. You know, there, those who are not going to college for the traditional voc, you know, professional vocation, but can earn, learn about a skill. In a two-year program or a one-year program like pipe fitting, like bricklaying, like HVAC, like, um, a few other. You know, jobs, construction jobs of that, of the variety of construction jobs that sort of got lost along the way. Our opportunities were not as open as they once were back in, you know, the early days. Um, so I'm, I'm excited to hear what you're saying. I, I'm looking forward to hearing about this meeting. The results of the meeting tomorrow. I know for, there are a lot of young people out there who have not been exposed to, um, a different way of life. Um, then again, some have been exposed to a different way of life, but they still choose to pick up a gun, which is sad, but I mean, I mean, I was horrified when Ohio became a concealed carry state, but you know, that's me. Um, but I, I think.
It's me too, Andrea.
Oh, I mean, it, we don't need, you know.
My lord.
I, I, I just, I, I'm, well, that being said, I'm, I'm not going to say anything about it because I don't want any gun people mad at me. It.
Well, let me, let me jump in, Andrea. I am a Second Amendment defender. I am a gun owner. I'll probably, I will own. Uh, firearms until they, they put me six feet under, but let me, let me say this. Responsible gun ownership. Is something that we have to not, we've got to make sure in this country, responsible gun ownership. I said it Saturday and it bears repeating. There is absolutely zero reasons why. Anybody other than the military need a AR fifteen rifle.
I agree.
Or AK forty seven. Now, I'll say this also, in my twenty-three years. As a SWAT team member, responding to the most critical situations in the city of Cincinnati. That here's the saying, when the citizens need something, that when they're in danger, they call the police. When the police are in danger, they call SWAT. I was honored to serve for twenty-three years. We, in twenty-three years, in the most critical situations. I cannot recall any time we ever used the AR fifteen that we put, that we had. What does that tell you? It tells me that these maximum capacity firearms. That are being sold to the public are absolutely unnecessary. I don't wanna hear about competition. You can go shoot gun competitions all over this country with shotguns and firearms. I, AR fifteens, AK forty sevens, those should be for the military.
Oh, my goodness.
Oh, I agree. I mean.
Yes, and women, and as a military veteran, I'm second in that.
Well, I, I agree with you. I mean, I think that um, I've worked around this country enough that. I've met a number of deer hunters who have talked to me about, oh Andrea, you should go, you should try deer hunting or. Hunting, you know, whether it's a bow or an arrow or a gun. And you know, they're responsible gun owners. They're responsible. They know what they're doing. It's a sport, blah, blah, blah. But those who just have a gun because they need, feel the need to protect themselves. I, I think that conceal and carry should have required them to continue to get the permit.
Yes.
But also I think they should strengthen it by also getting training on, as a gun owner. Get training to not react emotional when you are a gun owner. Because a lot of gun accidents happen because we're in the midst of an emotional state and you pick that gun up.
Well, Scotty, Scotty is, is a retired policeman. I would expect him to go, to have a gun. If we look at the data from around the world. The countries that, that don't have these silly rules that we have, they don't have murders. They don't have the kind of crime that we have. It's, it's absolutely unnecessary. And, and the NRA doesn't care about your life. They only care about making money.
That's right.
Yeah.
That's right.
Well, and, and like I said, I don't have anything against gun ownership. I think if you wanna own a gun, fantastic. Um, I just think that even with concealed carry, they should have kept the permits. Because at least then you know they're trained and they went through some sort of training and they can prove it with a card. Saying that they've been trained as a gun owner to handle this weapon, just like a car is a weapon, a gun is a weapon. And you know, I, I just, I just believe in responsible ownership is, goes along with the permit. We need a permit to do some other things else, but you know, that's just me.
This is not gonna be popular.
No.
And, and I just came up with it, but instead of going to the shooting range, go to church.
Well, hello.
Yeah, but in Texas, there were gun.
You know, you're gonna spend your time doing something.
Yeah.
The only reason somebody has a gun is to kill.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's, it's, I know there are various reasons why. I've been around enough people to know that. If you want a gun, fantastic, you know, just be responsible. And I, I, I just think that I know there's some challenging times ahead for the city and um, you know, I'll be there along the way. Um, um, but thank you so much for both of you coming on today and having this discussion. Looking forward to see what happens next with the contracts, with employment, with everything. So that we do represent everyone in the city cuz you know, Cincinnati is known for the character of their neighborhoods. And if we can't help out every single neighborhood, what are we here for?
Andrea, thank you. It has been a pleasure and I gotta say this, this young lady on here with me, President Pro Tim Parks. It is an honor to serve the citizens of Cincinnati with you, my dear sister. And Andrea, keep up the amazing work. And let me say this about you sis Andrea. You have no problem asking questions and challenging those that have been graced with authority and keep up the great work.
Th- thank you, thank you. It's.
Absolutely. That, that is the groove that I like in you, is that, is that you always ask the relevant questions. And, 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 and we need people like you. You are an advocate. You know, representing and um, and questioning, speaking truth to crowds.
Well, that's the reason why I'm, you know, with investing neighborhood. I stand up for our neighborhoods and our community councils. And um, I'm also, you know, with Mac, the Mac Committee. Uh, with the Cincinnati Symphony cuz I wanna see diversity with what we see on stage and the musicians that we see on stage as well. So I just believe everyone should have an opportunity and.
You work with my good friend Harold Brown?
Yes, I do.
That's amazing man. That's a, that's a great guy.
Yes, I do. I, I just became Mac Chairman this year. So, yeah. So it, it's um, you know, we're hoping that we um, continue to challenge and champion change. With the symphony as they do amazing work um, with the symphony and the music they perform and the pops and everything else. So, but that's, um, I just wanna say thank you again for coming on. Um, I just wanna say thank you for, that's for today's show. Um, you can find more information about today's topic and past podcast episodes at www.thecincinnatiherald.com. The Shash newsletter and or our social media. We're on Facebook, Twitter, Pinterest, Instagram and LinkedIn. Thank you again and good night.